Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five Special Plant Commission Meeting. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Klinger, here. Buckholz.
Here.
Wenling.
Here.
Chornak.
Here.
Musler.
Here.
Poindexter.
Here.
Moving the agenda, please join me with the pledge of allegiance. Remove your caps and stand up here if you're going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving the agenda to item C, new business clerk.
Requesting to rezone parcel number three four three zero two zero zero three, three four two zero seven zero zero two, and three four two one eight zero zero five, containing approximately one hundred and seventy-six acres along Snow Road to apply plant unit development district located in the U five dash A zoning district ordinance one one point zero three. The agent is David A. Jenkins, and the property owner is Primity Development LLC, and the planning commission's recommendation must be forwarded to city council for final action.
Thank you very much. With Mr. Jenkins, please hook the mic. Please state your name and your address for the record.
David Jenkins, address seventy-six Louvreza Boulevard, Berea, Ohio, four four zero one seven.
And can you tell us a little bit about this, this new district that we're trying to make on one hundred and seventy-six acres?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of Hazen Sports Group and my colleagues, Ted Tai Wong, who's general counsel and chief administrative officer for HSG, and Peter John Baptiste, our chief communications officer, they're really here to make sure I don't say the wrong things tonight. On behalf of the organization, I want to thank you all for, for your time this evening. We're excited to be here, excited about the progress that's been made to date, excited about this new milestone that we're going to talk about tonight with all of you, but really excited about the partnership that we're forging with the city of Brook Park, the residents of, of Brook Park, the tremendous support we've gotten from the FOP and the trades, can't thank you guys enough. And look, I guarantee there's a lot more work ahead of us than the work we've got done behind us, but the foundation of the relationships and the progress to date is going to ensure long-term success. We're really excited to be here. I'm going to hand it over to Ted in a minute to talk about the project in a little more detail, but what we're talking about today is a two-point-four billion dollar stadium and an eight-hundred million to another billion dollars of mixed-use private development that you see in this picture here. So that's a lot of jobs, and I think the presence here of, of the trades, the unions, shows how important this job is, this project is to the community. So we're really excited to be here. We learn a lot in these settings, so please ask a lot of questions, push us, ask us to clarify. Our time is yours, and we're happy to be here. Ted?
If you could please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Absolutely, Mayor. Ted Tai Wong, address the same as Mr. Jenkins, seventy-six Louvreza Boulevard, Berea, Ohio.
Thank you very much. Before we get to the presentation, you're in here, I want to ask that our recreation director, please, lower the mics.
So this brief presentation, I would just echo everything that Dave said while we're setting the stage, is really just to give, bring the vision to life that we've been working so hard on and will continue to work so hard on with a lot of the folks in this room. We'll just show you a, a video that, that some folks have seen, but I think it's good to set the stage and show the scale of what we're trying to achieve, not just, excuse me, not just for Brook Park, but also for the region. And then we'll walk through what the current program is with our development partner before finishing with a few renders and then taking questions. So really excited to be here. We'll go to the next slide, Paul. So we'll walk through this video, I'll narrate. I think you get a sense of the scale of the project. Hundred and seventy-six acre six acres, it's a blank canvas today. It is anchored by that dome stadium and emphasis on dome enclosed stadium that enables year-round use, but this is so much more than a stadium project. This is a state-of-the-art, three sixty-five, twenty-four-seven lifestyle and entertainment district. This is the view that you'll see from Hopkins. The first thing you'll see when we fly into the airport on this site in Brook Park, a brand-new front door for the region. As we fly through, you can see the parking that serves not only the, the dome stadium and all that it brings, football and beyond, but also the development. You see how integrated the stadium is with that development as well. Really, this has been designed so that you don't really know where the stadium footprint begins and the development ends and the, and the development begins. It's all one kind of live, work, play space, really designed for year-round use. You can see farmers markets, heavy emphasis on public spaces, winter wonderland, ice skating experiences in the, in the colder months, designed to drive density. You could imagine concerts in support of Browns games, home, home-away playoff games, and just activating as much as possible. As we come in towards the end of the video, this would be the new uni lot as we enter the dogtown for our most passionate fans. You know, one thing we like to say about the stadium design is closest first row of any NFL stadium in the league, but also the closest last row, so not a bad seat in the house, and really designed to maximize year-round use well beyond football. We can show the video again if you want it, it is that exciting, seen it once or twice. So this is the site plan, and before we dive into the specifics of the site plan, it's important to talk about our team. We've assembled a world-class team, we're really proud of it, certainly on the stadium design and construction manager, but specifically for tonight, our development partner, we cannot be prouder of. We ran an RFP last summer, and Lincoln Property Company out of Dallas, but offices all over the country and doing work all over the country and all over the world, won that process because they believe in this project, they believe what they can bring, and we can bring together to Brook Park and the region. So the plan that we're going to talk about is the result of Lincoln's market studies. So they look around, they, they compare it to comparable markets, they look at what else is in the region, and this is the result. So the numbers up here show kind of all phases. So it's primarily experiential retail, focus on experiential retail, not necessarily hard goods, kind of traditional shopping, more bars, restaurants, experiences that are going to bring families and individuals here to stay around the Dome Stadium. There is some traditional retail as well that you can see, and then hotels. We're really excited about the hotel use. The plan is for two hotels. I think anyone who's, who's flown in and out of Hopkins and knows the area, knows that it's really underserved right now with hotels, so we're really excited about that piece of, of the project. And then residential, I think no, no secret that there's a, a housing shortage in our region as, as across the country, and so the residential units is a really important piece. And then office down the road. If you go to the next slide, Paul, that previous slide showed all phases. If you look at the red outline, that's phase one. So phase one will come online with the stadium summer of two thousand twenty-nine. It's really important that when we open this great site to the public, that's the result of all this hard work together, that it isn't just a stadium, it needs to be a destination from day one. So there will be a substantial amount of development that opens with the stadium. You can see in the top table what that phase one looks like. So it's roughly half of the planned residential, just south of six hundred units. Both hotels would come online in two thousand twenty-nine to support the airport modernization as well as the stadium. The retail you could see up here, both in-line and experiential, and then a potential event venue for a smaller, smaller year-round use as well that's still in development. And then you can see future programming, the residential units, potentially office. We think office will work here for the right tenants, but as Lincoln dug in more to the market studies, office wasn't necessarily the, the best use right away, given everything going on in that market. But we think down the road for the right tenants, for the right companies, this will be a really compelling space and site for office. Go ahead, Paul. So then just a few more renders, as I'm sure you prepare your questions. We're just really excited about what this is going to do. Again, I mentioned it in the video, but this is a brand-new front door for Cleveland. This is right adjacent to the, the modernized Hopkins Airport, totally reimagined area, leveraging this site and keep going. Again, year-round use, families welcoming, a lot of emphasis on public spaces. Public spaces are key, it's part of our ethos at HSG and our other projects, and so that's certainly a, a key component, not just the business activity, but places for people to gather and be together. Just a few more shots, again, important to note, again, that the stadium is not just for Browns games, that's one of the biggest pieces of why this is going to work and be so successful for the region, is the building was designed for year-round use. So you can swap out those Browns jerseys for, you know, concert attire, and imagine the activity that's going to be there. And then just a couple more shots as we wrap. Mayor? That's all I've got for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, can we get the next question? Another great presentation. Before we bring it up here on the dais, I'm just going to go around and introduce everybody that's here. Obviously, we have our planning commissioners, but we'll be starting off to my left, your right, we have our law director, Carol Corbett, our tax administrator, Brian Thunder, our recreation director, Chris Wetmore, our finance director, Robert McGann, our economic development commissioner, Paul Marnicek, public works director, Brian Meyer, and our city engineer, Piatek. So just so everybody knows, if there are any questions for them as well too. All right, I'm going to bring it up here to the dais and open it up for questions or comments from any of the commissioners or Councilman Poindexter. Councilman Poindexter.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Good to see so many hard-working men and women from the building trade here in attendance. So thank you all. It really means a lot to us to really support this project. My first question, great heart of nation, by the way, Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Tyree. I noticed that in the phases, you have office buildings going later. Would that be subject to change at a later date, like let's say, you know, the plan has had two hotels on-site, they're, they're constantly booked, need more space, could those office buildings then be changed to hotels at a later date?
Thank you, Councilman, absolutely. So the initial phase that's scheduled to open with the stadium for the fall of two thousand twenty-nine is pretty set based on all of the market research that Ted referenced in the presentation. We're going to let the market dictate the rest of the development. So as that piece comes, phase one comes online, let's see how dense it is, let's see how it gets consumed, and then adjust as necessary. The feeling is ultimately we could build office space, but we'll be prepared and be nimble to, to adjust as necessary.
And then my follow-up question, you know, the parking is, is really spread out across the site, and, and I, I think that's a positive for the project, you know, parking around the site as to what we've been used to in the past. Based on the, I mean, the, it's, it, it takes up a good portion of that property, would there be plans in the future to add garages in some areas, maybe, maybe reduce some of that to, you know, the true hard, diehard tailgaters might use the flat lot, but people who aren't so concerned that may use it.
Yes, so the day-one plan will be roughly twelve to fourteen thousand parking spots on-site. Very similar to your first question, as market demand drives further development, we would then look to go to more structured parking if we were able to develop on parcels. So long, long-term, could be a scenario where there's more structured parking and more development around the building.
So, so the overall plan is just a general plan, it can mold and change as the situation there?
Phase one, again, feels pretty solid, but we'll be nimble and, and fix it if we have to.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And I probably should have started off with this, just to kind of simplify what we're doing here today. The one hundred and seventy-six acres that is on Snow Road right now is zoned for U five industrial. So what we're, what we're trying to obtain with this PUD is that we're going to zone it for U one through U six. Brook Park has eight zones, one through eight, we're looking to do U one through U six, and those are, U one is residential, U two is apartment and two family, we're looking to do retail, we're going to do warehouses. This will also obviously still have the U five industrial there, and then we have our U six, which is the commercial research and development area. So we, we want to open this up with a wide variety of, of selections of what we can do within there. The PUD does have guidelines within here on, on how this will work and the process will work. So what will happen through this process is this plant unit development comes to the planning commission. If they approve it, it will then be delivered to city council by Councilman Brian Poindexter, and then city council will have the emergency clause waived, and will have to have three readings on the city council. There's a forty-five-day window. Before the third reading, we will have a public hearing here at the city of Brook Park to take questions and comments from, from the residents of Brook Park, for those that are for or, or for against it, and then it'll have its final vote. Once, once, if that is approved, then this plant unit development has other things that will happen within this. There will be step two, there will be a preliminary plan presentation that will be put in front of the city, and then from there, there'll be the final development plans that will be put in front of the city. And within this planned unit development, there is protections for the city and also protections for the investors. So this is what we're, we're doing, it's the very basics of what we're doing here. We're basically building a city within a city, and we want to be able to have the opportunity to do many, many things here. All right. With that said, I'm going to still open it up here for the dais to see if there's anybody that has any questions for the agent. Commissioner, you have the floor. Welcome to Brook Park. We are the heart and pride of the county.
Perfectly located.
I have just a couple of questions. Would there be any plans to expand outside of that area?
As of right now, we have not talked with anybody about any potential acquisitions outside of the one hundred and seventy-six acres. We also haven't planned for any additional development that this could drive by others. So we think the economic impact long-term could be even greater than what we're projecting, but at this point, we're really focused on the one hundred and seventy-six acres.
Okay. The other question, I think might be covered in the bagged scanner here, but I didn't see if those high-tension wires over there, are those going to disappear?
Very likely disappear, actually, we're going to work on temporarily relocating them by the end of this year to allow for, hopefully dirt to start moving this fall and, and construction to really start in the spring. So we're working with First Energy on those lands.
Okay. One last comment, the tailgate, is there a designated area, maybe also a touch on dirt, maybe it does need areas for tailgating or?
All one hundred and seventy-six acres. Look, what I think we'll end up doing is, what this site allows you to do is, and what we can't currently do on our current site is, we have access three hundred and sixty degrees around the building. So we'll be able to create unique entrances for every type of product we offer, which will create pockets of different tailgating and, and pre-game ritual areas. So we do expect it to be very lively, and all the same rituals that existed on the lakefront will, will come here.
Okay. Well, just one more question, who's going to be our starting quarterback?
Really good question.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm going to do a follow-up with a few questions there, Commissioner Buckles. If you go to page three, number twenty-eight point zero five, PUD planning guidelines, page three, go to paragraph C, I'll, I'll take a minute to get there, go to page three, number twenty oh five, PUD planning guidelines, paragraph three, third line down, halfway through that, you can see the word permanent. Now, this is, this is just what the idea is, there's still going to be a final development plan that will have all of this information. Third line down halfway, permanent utility service, including gas, electric, cable, and telephone, shall be installed underground provided that the high voltage electric transmission lines own and maintain by the utility provider and providing electricity to the PUD district are excluded from the requirement. So, so there are guidelines right now that we have here in this PUD that we're aiming for. So as we create this beautiful boulevard, which is on Henry Ford Boulevard in Tangle, that will go over into Snow Road, the intent is to be able to have all the power underground with street lighting and this beautiful landscape and all of that. So that was a great question. Opening it up to other commissioners for questions. Commissioner, what do you think you have for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Brook Park, Brooklyn grounds, we've been a lifetime fan, so I'm excited about you being here and being part of the process. Question is, are there plans for walkways and tie-ins to some of the peripheral parking to keep it safe for the, the fans and stuff walking across the main roads? And then are there going to be any tie-ins with the RTA systems, the airports, and then the existing traffic flows and infrastructure, the plans for that, like widening some of the freeways, all of that to support the traffic command and the traffic command?
Great question. So we talk a lot internally in our organization, if, if we don't solve or make this a tremendous experience, then we're going to fail day one. So we put a lot of time and energy already into the site layout, the surrounding infrastructure, making it as safe as possible on event day or game day. So we have already within our road design, and I don't have it here with us today, but we do have very defined road closures and road openings depending on the type of event. So that's how we'll manage the footprint. And then we're going through right now, we, we did a preliminary infrastructure study, we're going through a much more in-depth study now that will further either corroborate our initial infrastructure study, which defines needs and potential costs, but we'll continue to refine that and, and should have the results in the next few months.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, the RTA piece. We never try to get ahead of our public partners, we haven't done that since day one. So I don't want to talk out of school, but we've had preliminary conversations about is there a way to extend the Brook Park line into the site? There's of course a cost to do that and the feasibility behind it to figure out. So we're having great conversations with RTA and their leadership, but more to come on that.
Okay. Just a follow-up with that too, when, when you talked about the upgrades to the highway system, that's something that our engineer at Piatek and Director Brian Meyer, they're leading that with Hazen Sports Group's Phil Dangerfield, there's been some great progress with that, we're able to get our application to Columbus. We've, we had a great presentation with Director Hodak and, and her team for this track funding that, application that we put in, we will be presenting in the fall down in Columbus. So a lot of this stuff that has to take place, and there is a lot, we're moving ahead, and it's been very organized through the city engineer and then public works director. So we, we, we've got a lot of this stuff accomplished, and we will bring it to you as soon as, as we can. Anyone else up here? Commissioner Chornak, I knew you were going to have a question, maybe even about ten or twelve, getting forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jenkins, this multifamily project of one thousand one hundred and eighty-one, will it be like a short-term lease, who's got a moderate debt system, will that be property or, or will it be like month-to-month, yearly?
It's likely going to be for rent multifamily housing, so probably an annual-type lease basis. We're likely going to open six hundred of the units initially, and then phase two, the other six hundred, but likely leased versus purchased.
Single rooms, multi-rooms, or anything like that, is the decision for?
Largely single and two, two-bedroom type units.
Yeah, if I could chime in, excuse me, Dave.
If, if, if we could, Ted, if you could use the microphone after we're recording this.
I'd just highlight again the expertise of Lincoln as the property, you know, we're not developers, we've said that, Dave said that, so we found the best, and they, they actually, their bread and butter has been in this sort of residential multifamily. And so, you know, we're really following their lead, they're going to lead all of that, but we'll be hand-in-hand with them.
Like the mayor said, this is going to be a city inside a city, so it's a very impressive project. By the presentation, I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Brook Park, business over for thirty-two years, and the biggest drawback that I always had is, naming, actually in seventy-seven, I started working at Ford, who of course I knew a lot of it, was when you would go pick up guests to ride back into Brook Park, you would see their smoke stacks or what was going on. So I really want to thank the Hazen Group, you for this, for whoever, like Albert Einstein said, it begins with imagination and comes to project. And I think this will escalate northeast Ohio. In the seventies when I was growing up, this city was recognized for the recreation center that we're in when I was playing football, I was down in Hamilton, Ohio, I gave fifteen, they said, what about this recreation site? And like the governor of the state of Ohio also brought that, this will be the first dome stadium in the state of Ohio. So for regionalization, I think it would be great for North East Ohio. I also want to compliment this administration, the mayor, for Big O twenty-four-seven, there's no doubt about this, and for their hard work in bringing this presentation, and I welcome you to Brook Park. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilman Poindexter, do you?
Yeah, kind of, I wanted to follow up with something, Commissioner Poindexter. So the apartments are going to be rented, is that, is that going to be the case for, like, all the buildings? Are they going to be leased buildings, or, or like, are they going to be broken down and individual apartments sold off? Is there a plan on that or?
You know, I think that becomes market-driven. Of course, we'll have some sort of almost homeowners association rules that govern the entire district. So whether we own the building or gets sold in the future, we have to be very conscious about how a stadium coexists with all of the mixed-use development, and the fan experience is just as good as the resident or the workforce experience. So we'll be really thoughtful about defining those rules and regulations, which then should be able to easily sustain any sort of future ownership of the project.
Yeah. I will.
All right. Seeing no one else here on the dais, what I was going to do is, I'm going to welcome anyone from the audience that would like to speak for or, or against this PUD. And when you come to the microphone, if you could please state your name and your address for the record.
David Wandelaw, scene thirty-two fifty Uglent Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one five. Mayor, thank you for your leadership on this project, and I see your team of leaders. This would not be possible in every city in the county, and obviously, there's a lot of vision that took place here, not only from Hazen Sports Group, but from you and from your team here. And oftentimes, we talk about the impact of a project on the community. This will transform not only your community, but this entire region, and there will be community benefits for all of Cleveland, Clevelanders, greater Clevelanders for many, many years to come. On behalf of these building trades members in the audience, many of whom are here away from their families, I'd like to show strong and enthusiastic support for this project. We urge you to move this out of planning committee tonight and to get this passed so we can get shovels in the grounds and get this thing going. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone, I will bring it back up here to the dais and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve, it's been properly seconded. Do we have any questions on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, please hold your role.
Wenling?
Yes.
Poindexter?
Yes.
Klinger?
Yes.
Buckholz?
Yes.
Chornak?
Yes.
Musler?
Yes. Okay, has passed, congratulations. Moving the agenda to item D, adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly seconded. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, please hold your role.
Tornack?
Yes.
Klingler?
Yes.